Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, January 11th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dale Ray from the Lakeview Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from the Havasu Bloom Festival, Mr. Steve Tickner.
Good evening. Our Father, it's a new year and it's a new day. And as you spoke through the prophet Isaiah, you long to do new things in your people. And so I pause tonight, we all pause, as we ask for your plans and your purposes, for your leaders and for the people of Lake Havasu. I ask, do a new thing in each of us. As we look to you in prayer, we place our lives in your hands. Give our leaders your divine guidance and wisdom to oversee the administration of this city. Protect us, I pray, with your mighty hand to save and fulfill in our mayor and council, in our city offices, in our police and fire departments, throughout this new year, your divine destiny for this city and people, in the mighty name of Jesus, I ask it. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Steve, if you'd like to share a little bit about the balloon festival?
Yes, thank you so much for having me. I'm Steve Tickner. I'm the Executive Director of the Havasu Bloom Festival and Fair. And we're excited to announce, this is our 11th year of our event. The dates for this year's event are January 20th through the 23rd, Windsor Beach State Park. The hours for the event are Thursday from noon till 10:30. Friday and Saturday are both 6:00 AM till 10:30 PM. And Sunday's hours are 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM. You can get tickets at the bargain price of $20 per person. That ticket gets you a wristband that's good for all four days, one-time purchase, so that's good. Right now, you can buy tickets at the balloon fest store down on McCulloch. It's 2109 McCulloch Boulevard. And then after that, after the 18th of January, the store will be shutting down and we'll be moving all the stuff down to the fairgrounds, to the balloon fest grounds, and we will be selling tickets at the gate at that point. So parking is available off-site again this year. We have five different parking lots with shuttle buses running approximately every 20 minutes or so. We have parking at Pima Wash, MCC, the high school, the transfer station, and the Aquatic Center. In addition to the balloon fest here, we've got, well, this year, we've got about 80 balloons or so that are going to be out there flying. We've got pilots from all over the country and also all over the world. Two special shapes are going to be there. There's going to be about 10 special shapes, but two that are very popular are the Darth Vader balloon and the Yoda balloon. So that should be a lot of fun to come out and see that. In addition to that, we're going to be doing, trying to do two ascensions per day. We try to do one in the morning and one in the afternoon. It's all weather dependent, so please, everybody, pray for no wind, and that'll make for a really exciting event. In addition to that, we've got lots of great live entertainment. We've got food. We've got vendors. There will be a full carnival there and car shows. There's demonstrations. There'll be kite flying. There'll be belly dancing. There'll be comedians, jugglers, I mean, just all kinds of stuff to keep you entertained all day long. So it should be fun. And let's not forget the Beer Garden, too. So that'll be good. This year, as you know, as every year, we're a volunteer-driven event, and we typically have about 1,200 to 1,300 volunteers to fill about 2,500 shifts. Right now, we're still looking for about 500 to 600 shifts to be filled. And that may sound like a lot, but it's kind of actually on track for where we normally are this time of year. So there is still time to volunteer if you want. There's a couple of different ways to do that. The first one being online, that's probably the easiest way to do it, but just go to havasu balloon festival dot com, and you can register to become a volunteer there. And once you register, you can look at all the different jobs, the different shifts, and pick what you want and the time and day that you want. Aside from that, you can go down to the store on McCulloch and register as a volunteer there. And you can also register at our volunteer meeting, which is going to be this Saturday morning from 9:00 till noon at the Lendenbridge Resort Event Center. So you can actually just come right on down. You don't need an appointment or anything. Just come on down and register. So a couple of other things real quick. In addition to our balloon event, we have a 5K fun run and walk that's going to be Saturday during the balloon fest. We've got approximately 100 runners signed up so far, and we have room for more. And we're also going to have a balloon festival golf tournament. At this point, we have about 16 teams signed up. We're hoping to get a few more. There's still time to do both of those, and you can get information on both those extra events on our website as well. Lastly, the balloon festival is presented to you guys by the Lions Club, Kiwanis Club, and three Rotary Clubs here in Havasu. Many people don't know that we're a nonprofit event and that all the proceeds from the balloon fest go right back to the local community. And proud to say that in the last 10 years, we've donated well over $1 million back to Lake Havasu communities. Thank you. On behalf of the balloon festival, I'd just like to say thanks for having me speak tonight, and we really appreciate all your continued support, and we look forward to seeing all of you out there. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. And the entire balloon festival is actually volunteers, so Steve himself even as the Executive Director is a volunteer. So thank you for all of your work. All right, item four on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell?
Here.
David Lane?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Cameron Moses?
Here.
Jenny Koch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jim Dolan?
Here.
Mayor Cal Sheehy?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is our call to the public. This is an opportunity for citizens that wish to address the city council within issues within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. So we've been receiving some feedback that folks are addressing us at Call to the Public with issues that are not in the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City, so please keep them within the jurisdiction. Your comments will be limited to three minutes or less. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have the three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that you have your three minutes is up. If you're here for an item that is one of our public hearings, we encourage you to wait to that time so we can have a two-way conversation during Call to the Public. We will listen intently on those matters, again, within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City, but we won't be able to have a two-way conversation. It's important that we be respectful and we have decorum with each other and understand that's what it is. And you're here to direct at the city council, not to staff or the audience. So with that being said, you do not have to sign up for the Call to the Public, but we did have several that did. We'll start with those folks first, and then we'll open it up to others. So the first speaker is Karen Vander Jack.
Karen Vander Jack, resident of Lake Havasu City for five years. Tonight, I'd like to speak about your oath of office. I know you all had to take an oath, saying you support and abide by the U.S. Constitution, thereby the Arizona Constitution. I know that 100% of you are certain that you abide by that oath. What you probably did not realize, from lack of knowledge, or lack of research, or maybe lack of seriousness of what you had agreed to do when you voted into office, is that you're actually giving an oath to the organic laws of this land. The Constitution is only the final part of the organic laws. This should be common knowledge. The chief purpose of the four organic laws is to regulate and control government, not the citizens. These laws are far more important. They are the founding documents of the United States of America, which no statute or code should conflict with principles set forth in these documents. What are the organic laws that you pledged to abide by? Well, the Declaration of Independence, 1776, the Articles of Confederation, 1777, the Northwest Ordnance of 1787, and of course, the Constitution in 1787. Sadly, you're breaking your oath, otherwise known as treason, punishable by the very laws that you are breaking. For example, the Declaration of Independence says, "There shall be no taxation without consent." Therefore, this principle should be adhered to in the Internal Revenue Code. In fact, it is. So how did our city council decide to raise our taxes without our consent? I think the patriots, some patriots I knew threw some tea over the board, and when that happened, to take a stand against this, I guess we need to take some kind of stand, too, and send a message. Well, here's another example of your breaking of your oath. Applying or agreeing to accept federal grants with strings attached. The federal funds are not designed to be transferred to our city for COVID relief or whatever we think we need to survive. 70% of our federal money is used unconstitutionally, outside the restrictions of the four organic laws. Remember my story about Davy Crockett? Need I mention an illegal proclamation that forcibly, yes, using a police force to close certain businesses? Or how about a mandate forcing and encouraging businesses to require wearing a face diaper? These are all treasonous acts. We gave you a wonderful opportunity to show your allegiance and seriousness of this oath with a resolution to be a city committed to the Constitution, i.e. the organic laws, but it was ignored. And even an interesting comment by the Vice Mayor Dolan, he went something like this. "I can only agree with parts of the resolution." And another quote, he said, "I have 57 people to represent." Unquote. Okay, Vice Mayor, maybe we can sit down and you can tell me what parts you don't agree with. So I'd just like to know how many here do not believe in the Constitution?
To us, so thank you very much. The next speaker is Ginger Doppler.
Thanks, Karen. Okay, to continue on with Karen, because it's on my heart about the Constitution and the oath that everyone's taken here, all the people serving the city, you guys, the police officers, everything. So in the Constitution, so what we would like to do is possibly have a sit-down and tell us what parts you don't agree with as far as representing the masses. What parts don't you agree with? Because we want to, basically, the Constitution, we want to make sure you guys understand where we come from. It's really, we're just constitutionalists. That's all we are. You never had a right to shut down any right to assemble, and no one ever apologized. And yes, I understand, at the beginning, everyone got a little scared, and so things were shut down. But no one had a right, no one had a right to show up and kick people out of bars and stuff at 8:00 with our police force. That was never a right given to you guys. And we, you govern at the consent of us. So to continue on from the Declaration of Independence, just in case you haven't read this, and everyone's civics eighth grade. Governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, of us, deriving the powers from us, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to then shall seem most likely to affect our safety and happiness and yours. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes. And I'm telling you right now, COVID, COVID is a hoax. Yes, it's sick, people are getting sick out there, but this hospital, remdesivir, is killing people. So I'm praying for all of you on the board. This is your, this is our city. COVID is not killing people. It's the protocols from CDC. And we want you to understand that if you haven't, if you, Ben Peterson left a book, World Economic Forum, Klaus Schwab, if you don't understand what's happening, depopulation, what the whole COVID is, we are trying to help explain it to all of us, because you guys, we're all in this together. It's us against evil, and we need you on our side. So to continue on, prudence will dictate governments long established should not be changed for lighter transient causes. And accordingly, all experience has shown that mankind are most disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable. This is all our Declaration of Independence. Then to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations, pursuing invariably the same object, events is designed to reduce them under absolute deputism, it is our right, it is our duty, to throw off such government and to provide new guards for our future and the security. And that's what we're about for all of us, because we have to understand where everything is, what's happening. And if you haven't read that Klaus Schwab's book, The Great Reset, that Ben Peterson left here, I encourage all of you to read it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ben Peterson.
Greetings, Ben Peterson, Maricavo Drive, Lake Havasu City. I'd like to make the council aware of the Freedom of Information Act request that came through Pfizer to get the emergency use authorization. What this was is a snapshot of the three months from December 1st, 2020, to February 28th, 2021. And what it is, and I'm going to leave this for you guys, I'm going to leave this with the clerk. It outlines a snapshot of the recovered, unrecovered, fatal, and unknown outcomes of the vaccine. And since I have short time, I'll just get right to the point. With normal people, the fatality rate is about 0.3%. And what this, out of the 42,086-person case study, in just three months, 1,223 people died. That's 2.9%. So if you have a 0.3% death rate with natural immunity, and administering the vaccine gives you a nearly 3% death rate, that's 10 times. That's an order of magnitude. And so we've been told that these are safe and effective. It's not safe. And this data here, which I have outlined-
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Point of order?
Yes.
The Call to the Public is for things that are under the jurisdiction of the city council. There is no vaccine requirement in this city. This is not under the jurisdiction. So if we could move past that, please?
It's affecting the whole country, and Lake Havasu City is in the United States of America, which is under mandates. So-
Yeah, if you could wrap up-
Yeah, I could wrap up.
-your comments, thank you.
So 52% remain unrecovered. And so it's not safe, it's not effective. This does affect us here, whether there are mandates in the city or not, because what's happening in the blue states is going to try to push over here next, you know? So what we need from you guys, and I thought this was a one-way, I didn't realize we're having a two-way conversation, we're kind of outside of the decorum-
If it leads outside of the jurisdiction of our, of our city, then there is the ability for the point of order, so.
All right. Anyway, not safe, not effective. Here's the data. Please read it. Did you read the book? Obviously, you don't have to answer it, but-
Thank you.
It's a good question.
All right, the next speaker is Dale Dennis.
Hello. Nice to see all of you. I don't know, this isn't your jurisdiction. I'm going to talk about the election that's coming up. Most of you are up for reelection. Is that going to, are you going to shut me down?
As long as you stay within the con-
I want the public, I want the public to know that we've got elections coming up. All your seats are open. If they're not, probably you should be recalled, because there's not one of you that have served us. And certainly, there's not one of you that has the common sense to hire somebody to help this city. So y'all, I, you know, got no, no confidence in any of this. That being said, the public needs to know that this is our golden opportunity for constitutional patriots to take back our city. City by city, county by county, from the bottom up, this is how it's done. The mayor's seat and three council seats are on the ballot for the fall primary election on August 2nd. These are four-year positions. Can Havasu withstand four more years of these people and the tax rate and fee increases they vote for? Can Havasu withstand another four years of corruption and noncompliance to the Constitution they swore an oath to? Also, the medical industry that y'all are heavily involved with, that's another thing. It's imploding. You look at the footprint of this city and that what, how much property we have for the medical industry? Y'all have plans for when that's gone, what you're going to do with it? Anyway, election packets are available for Lake Havasu City residents interested in running for a city seat on the city council in 2022. Prospective candidates can pick up packets directly from the city clerk's office at City Hall anytime during regular office hours. Candidates must be 18 years old at the time of filing nomination papers, a registered voter in Lake Havasu City, and have resided within city limits for at least one year. All properly executed documents, including nomination petitions containing at least 645 and no more than 1,289 signatures, must be filed in the city clerk's office between March 7th and April 4th. The following city council members and mayor are all running again, and the total years they have been in office. 2012 Jenny Koch, 2014 Michelle Lynn, 2014 Cal Sheehy, Jim Dolan, 2018. Now, this gets a little personal here, but guys, some of the truth is painful. We'll see. Jenny Koch was appointed in 2012, not selected, not elected, because Sonny Borelli and another city council member resigned. Jenny Koch was then working for the Chamber of Commerce, where she worked for 12 years. Jenny has been appointed vice mayor twice, once in 2017 and also in 2020. Jenny currently works at Havasu Hospital as Market Director of Physician Recruitment. 700 of her coworkers, employees at the hospital were going to be fired over the mandate. Jenny never spoke up, not once. She did nothing, didn't come to our, to our rally either. Bummer, I can't finish.
The next draw your reply.
It's a conflict of interest for me to show up at an event when I work at the hospital. And the hospital did not require vaccine mandates, the government did, so. And they did, and they, they did make-
No, we can respond to criticism. We can respond to criticism, please.
And they did make an exception and implemented a rule, so if they had a religious exemption, they accepted all religious exemptions, so.
Yeah, it's not a two-way conversation. The next speaker is Janet Grippy. When it's, when it's your opportunity, you can, you can come address the council, so. Sir, Janet, good evening and welcome.
Hello. Term limits for city council members need to be considered. You know who believe that? None other than Thomas Jefferson. He wasn't in Philadelphia for the Constitutional Convention of 1787, when term limits, or as they were called then, mandatory rotation, were dropped from the Articles of Confederation, our first governing document. "The feature I dislike and greatly dislike is the abandonment in every stance of the necessity of rotation in office," Jefferson wrote when he got back from France and saw what had been passed. "For the rest of his life, he advocated for term limits, praising citizen legislators and lambasting office hunters who spent too much time in office. The idea of having term limits is that the politics of opportunity to open up the government to new people, to present the community with the opportunity to serve. Government service, according to the founders, was not to be a lifetime career. It was to be something that we volunteered, basically, given the comparative nature of what we would earn in the private sector during the years we spent in the government, but we'd go back, we would stay in government forever, we would go back to our private lives and into private practice. With term limits, the idea is it could potentially increase the number of competitive elections that take place, because there will be more open seats involving new candidates with fresh ideas and new blood. We cannot recycle people through these positions. Two terms are reasonable to do, as much as you're able to do in that period of time and that somebody else come in and take it over. Let somebody else come in and have a new set of eyes on it. Nine of the 10 largest U.S. cities have term limits in this country. It's important to get new perspective in, it's important to get new perspective in every so often, and term limits are really the best way to do that. It's time for two and a half-term, 10-year city council Jenny Koch and two-term, eight-year city council members Cal Sheehy and Michelle Lynn to step aside and support new voices who will continue to change our city for the better. Get in, do the job, then pass the role over to someone else. It is public service, not a career. Thank you."
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarah Jones.
Hello, everyone. Tonight, I really wanted to speak and tie everything in with devolution of government. Maybe we need half of the people up here on the board, maybe not five, maybe three. We get too many people involved with what's going on. We've got too much of what we've got now. So we do have people who have been on the board for several years, Jenny Koch, for over now a decade, who has been vice mayor twice, Michelle Lynn, 2014, Cal, 2014, and Jim Dolan, 2018. We do need term limits, because once we come in and we get into office, maybe we get a little comfortable, we learn the ropes, whatnot. I feel that perhaps, maybe we learn the ropes, we learn, maybe there's, what's the term? We get lobby, people who lobby you or whatnot. We need fresh blood, so that that does not happen. We get people in here too long, they get a little comfortable, and then here we are, dealt with what we're dealing with. Not to pick on you, Jenny, but your 700 people, yeah, that happened, but you should have stood up before we had to come to rally. So we did that for your people. You did not. Every one of you, we, we need about half of you up there, maybe three, so there's a two to one vote. Right now, we've got five, whatever, six, plus the mayor. We need devolution of government. We are way too big. We don't want to vote anymore, to the point, what good does it do? Because everybody gets in and nothing changes. But we have to vote, because we are not, we're not at a place right now with our country where people, where people are, the term, they're not, we're not, we need to stop dealing with government. Devolution is the term, devolution. So taxes, licenses, insurance, and all of that kind of thing. Find me anywhere that it says in the Constitution that we have to do those things. We don't. Why are we doing it? Because government got too big. And every one of you, we have, we have informed you guys for the past year and a half, informed you, and if you're not doing your own research or listening to us, you're complicit, in which, if you're either complicit out of ignorance, or you're complicit because you're, you're complying with the other people, that the bad guys. So that's why we're up here every, every chance that we get, because you're not listening. And then the 57,000 people, we are the 57,000 people, Dolan. We are. And I want to tell you, where are the 57,000 people? We talk about this often. I know you can't respond, and that's fine, but we talk about the 57,000 people very often. Where are they? We are them. You guys need to start listening to us.
Thank you. Yeah, would you have a point? Councilmember Campbell has a point of clarification.
As Board of Trustee on the Havasu Regional Hospital for approximately the last five or six years, I can completely agree with most of you that the state of medical affairs is dire. I've said that for the last couple of years, for sure. I also want to state, as the Board of Trustee on the hospital, I'm not defending anybody here, but I know there's a few of us in this room that sit there right next to me. We fought diligently to stop the vaccine mandates that were coming from the higher up. I sat in the meetings, I was a Board of Trustees, sitting there supporting the fact of what we can do.
Campbell, it's not on the agenda, so we can't go too-
Thank you. All right, that's it. So I just wanted to point a clarification, you're local, as a volunteer for the hospital, I know that we were fighting for the stopping of vaccine mandates, just a clarification.
Right, so that concludes, we can't have, we can't keep going back and forth, so we have a, that concludes the folks that have signed up. Would anyone else like to address the city council? Yeah. If you want to make, make your way to this podium, state your name for the record, please? Yes?
Oh, my name is Peggy Pollock. I live at 54 South El Dorado, Lake Havasu City. I would like to say thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the wonderful job you do. Your last coffee with the mayor was totally incredible. You gave me all the information I needed. I was worried about population, traffic, police department, what, and you laid it all out. This city is a great place to be. Thank you all for the hard work you do, and accolades to you, Mayor. You came out at the beginning. You do not have to wear a mask, you do not have to do anything. You make your own choices. And you said that, Mayor, and you backed it up, and thank you.
Thank you.
You do a great job, all of you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? Yes, sir, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Derek Bilkey. I'm the owner of Optic Helicopters, a local helicopter tour company here in this beautiful town. We get the call home. I feel like there's a lot of tension in the room tonight, I'm not trying to add to it. But as most of you know who I am, at least on the city council, last time I was here, September 14th, I approached you guys about changing some city code that shut down my location on the island. And I know there was some miscommunication and some rumors that I was gone and I didn't care anymore, and I wasn't here. And I'm just here tonight to let you know I am still here. I actually had to leave town. That almost put me out of business, so I had to go find work elsewhere, but I'm still here. I still, I'm 100% willing to work with you guys. It just came to my attention that there's an airport advisory meeting about this that I was not aware of. I was not aware of. I've been trying to, at least people there for, you have to understand that I've been gone, trying to pay my bills, so being here and being in contact with everybody hasn't been the easiest thing. But I just want to let you know I'm here and a hundred percent willing to work with you guys. And that's, that's it. I have a lot of resources at my, I have a lot of available resources, and this town means everything to me, this business is everything to me, so I'm sure we can work together and figure out how to benefit. We can all benefit from this, so just letting you know I'm still here.
Yeah, great, thank you. Yeah, I actually reached out to you, left a voicemail, so I'm glad to know you're here, and I'll reach back out to you this week, so. All right, would anyone else like to address this? Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Cindy Johnson. I'm a permanent resident here in Havasu for about three years now, but I've been coming to this beautiful place since I was eight years old. So, I am familiar with the city. I love it, love being here, and I need to talk to you from the heart today, tonight. A few weeks ago, I was here to listen to the fire chief and the chief of police at the coffee with the mayor, and I was so impressed by them, because they knew the importance of planning now for the future. They knew the importance of educating their departments and the community to make us prepared for the future. But my question is, and it's rhetorical, what are you doing to prepare our community for the future? Resolution seventeen seventy-six was presented to you, and you voted it down. When I heard that, it was a heartbreak, because I thought, why? Why would it be voted down? In the things that our country is going through right now, why would that be voted down? And then it hit me, it's about the money. It's always about the money. Everything is always about the money. And how utterly disappointed I was to realize that. Washington State and Tennessee want, are pushing to put their unvaccinated people into camps. This is ludicrous, but of course, the illegal immigrants are exempt from that. Bill Gates is pushing to stop Social Security payments to the people that are unvaccinated. Again, ludicrous. Now, you might say, oh, this lady is crazy, she doesn't know what she's talking about, she's a fool, but I'm telling you, because of your ignorance on these issues, it's going to bury all of us. We need to act now to protect ourselves for the future. What is going to come? I don't have that crystal ball, but I see other things happening around us, and I want us to be prepared for what's to come. Sorry, it's emotional to me. I'm only one vote, and on August, in August, when we vote on the new election, and I'm really sorry to say this, because I don't know you people that well, except for what I have seen, you're not going to get my vote. You're not, because-
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council at Call to the Public? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the Call to the Public, move on to item six. I had asked, and you were too busy out of decorum and not doing the Call to the Public, so the Call to the Public is now closed. Item six is the Consent Agenda. Would anyone like to address the city council, or excuse me, would any of the council members like to remove any item for separate discussion?
We don't get to hear it.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I guess you have to be up there to be-
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Lane. Any further discussion? All those in favor, or excuse me, I guess we're ready to vote?
I got further discussions.
Thank you.
I guess my voice doesn't need to hear.
Yeah, the Call to the Public is now closed, sir. We have the city's business to conduct, so.
If my voice doesn't need to hear.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is Correspondence Communications Petitions Announcements and the City Manager Report. Item seven point one is announced vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is the listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member and three alternate members. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven point two is the City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Welcome back from the holidays, and I hope everybody had a happy New Year. The 2021 Leadership Lake Havasu Class, we, they held a mock city council meeting in our council chambers here in December, where they discussed a mock agenda item related to events and vehicle access on Main Street. Talked about the concept of actually shutting down Main Street as a mock city council meeting, shutting down Main Street for pedestrian traffic only. So, a very interesting exercise. Mayor Sheehy and Councilmember Koch and Councilmember Campbell participated in the opportunity to educate participants in the leadership class on Robert's Rule of Order, the county, the council meeting proceedings, City Department roles, and the roles of council members, Vice Mayor and the Mayor. Lieutenant Shane Soloma is retiring on January twentieth. Shane grew up in Lake Havasu City and graduated from Lake Havasu High School, and soon after was hired as a police officer for the Lake Havasu City Police Department back in 2002. Lieutenant Soloma's career with Havasu PD was remarkable. He worked his way up through the ranks during his twenty-year career, promoting to senior police officer, police sergeant, and then promoting to police lieutenant in 2015 to finish out the rest of his career. Thank you for your service to Lake Havasu City, Shane, and congratulations on your retirement. Mayor, you proclaim December twenty-third as Victor Rodriguez Day in honor of his ninetieth birthday. Mr. Rodriguez was born December twenty-third, nineteen thirty-one, in Snyder, Colorado, where he graduated from high school there. His life was filled with accomplishments, including his service in the Air Force and his calling as a minister. Victor married his wife of fifty-six years, Charlotte Rodriguez, and they moved their family to Lake Havasu City, Arizona, back in nineteen eighty-seven. Mr. Rodriguez is also, also the father of our Parks Field Supervisor, Tim Rodriguez. Happy birthday to you, Mr. Rodriguez, and thank you for your service to our country and to this community. Mayor, you proclaim today as, today as National Board Certified Teacher Day in honor of Christie Olson. Becoming a National Board Certified Teacher is known as the gold standard and the teacher certification process. It is a rigorous process designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers who show a commitment to improving education for all students. Christie was the first teacher in the district to become board certified twenty years ago. Since then, she has made it her mission to ensure the district has accomplished teachers in every grade, every subject, and every school. A well-deserved congratulations to Ms. Olson and to all the National Board Certified Teachers. Both our Lake Havasu City Fire Department and our Police Department received the Partnership Award from Mojave County Sheriff's Office, thanking them for their partnership and support in keeping the Colorado River safe for our residents and for our visitors. Congratulations to you, Chief Doyle, and to you, Chief Palapas, and thank you to Sheriff Schuster for your continued partnership. Our pavement rehab work on McCullough Boulevard from Akoma to Smoke Tree begins this week. This includes partial and full closures over the course of next two weeks. So, this will be a mill and fill, so we're going to be tearing out the asphalt along, along McCullough, again between Smoke Tree and Akoma, and brand-new asphalt will be, will be laid. We're going to do our best as city staff and working with the contractor to maintain access throughout the day. There will be disruptions, so please find alternative routes if, if, if you can, allow yourself extra travel time, and please abide by all the construction signage in the area. Most of that work will be done in the evenings to try to accommodate the needs of our downtown business owners. Thank you for your assistance to the public, and please exercise all caution when driving through this, this area. If you have questions, please direct it towards our city team at eight-five-four-zero-seven-eight-nine. Our Lake Havasu City Fire Rescue and EMS kicked off their new wave CTE Fire Service Program in partnership with our local Lake Havasu High School. The Fire Service Program is designed to introduce students to careers in the fire service by focusing on the principles, the theory, and practices associated with management of fire operations, firefighting services, and community fire issues. The teachers of the class are very own, are members of our very own Lake Havasu Fire Department. The classroom lessons include the mission and the structure of fire service, communication, building construction, fire dynamics, and introduction to hazardous material analysis. They also, the students also earn first aid and CPR certificates and have hands-on training with personal protective equipment, portable fire extinguishers, ropes, knots, grounds, ladders, and much, much more, all in a day of one of our firefighters here at Lake Havasu City. This is truly a partnership that benefits, benefits our youth and our community for several years to come, and I'd like to say, well done, Chief Palapas. As a reminder, our city offices are closed, closed on Monday, January seventeenth, in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. Police and Fire Department Services are always unaffected, we're always here for you. However, administrative offices and Aquatic Center are closed. The trash and recycling services, to my knowledge, are not affected, but please check the, the Republic Services website. And with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item eight, which is our public hearing, starting with eight point one, is Introduce Ordinance Number Two-Two-Dash-One-Two-Seven-Eight, Amending the Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter Two Point Zero Four, City Administration and Council, Council Requests and Public Requests. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. At the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one City Council Regular Meeting, the City Council provided staff with direction on changes to council requests and public requests. The proposed ordinance in front of you for introduction makes the following changes necessary to carry out the direction received. It amends two-point-zero-four-two-eight-zero council requests to include that any member of the council may request that an item be researched further or place an item on a future agenda for consideration, discussion, and/or legal action by, the first is making a motion and receiving a second, no vote necessary, during the future discussion items portion of the city council meeting, or two, submitting a written request to the mayor, and then the mayor will work with the council members and city manager to determine the best course of action for handling the request. There is also changes to amending two-point-zero-four-two-nine-zero public requests to include that interested parties or their authorized representatives may request that an item be placed on the city council meeting agenda by submitting a written request to the city clerk or the city council as a whole, and then a city council member may request further research or placement of that item on the agenda in accordance with the council request process in two-point-zero-four-two-eight-zero. A copy of the ordinance with track changes was provided in the packet, along with the minutes from the November twenty-third meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions of Ms. Williams from any members of the council? Yeah, I appreciate, there was obviously lengthy discussion that we had at that meeting in November, and I believe that what's presented to us takes into account all those things, so we appreciate the staff being able to interpret that conversation and then bring it forward with this introduction this evening. If there are no comments from council, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for additional discussion or possible motion. Councilmember Campbell?
I motion to move to, wait a second, is it right? It just seems weird. I motion to, I move to introduce ordinance number Two-Two-Dash-One-Two-Seven-Eight, amending Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter Two Point Zero Four, Administration and City Council Regarding Council Requests and Public Requests.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point two is Adopt Ordinance Number Two-Two-Dash-One-Two-Seven-Seven, approving a planned development rezone for four-oh-one, four-eleven, four-twenty-one, four-thirty-one, and four-forty-one, Lake Havasu Avenue North, tract twenty-three-oh-five, block two, lots ten through fourteen, for multiple-family RM to mixed-use general plan development district prohibiting the allowable land use of self-storage or mini-storage units. Mr. Morris.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you very much. Here's the subject property. The area map is showing that properties consist of five different lots here outlined in red. Has one property on the west side of Lake Havasu Avenue North, it's between Palo Verde Boulevard and Industrial Boulevard to the north. The property backs to Highway ninety-five, it's about just over two and three-quarter acres in size, it's about five hundred feet of frontage and two-hundred-and-fifty feet deep overall, and the site is currently undeveloped and vacant. The zoning currently is RM residential, a multiple-family. The properties to the north and south are also zoned RM, and they're developed with condominium projects. The property to the east across Lake Havasu Avenue, they're also zoned RM, and they're a mix of vacant lots and residential units, single-family. Across Highway ninety-five, there's some C-one and some manufactured home zoning. The mixed-use general district, these examples from the Development Code of what we're looking for with development of mixed-use general. The mixed-use general district allows commercial uses and the potential of residential development above the ground floor. The principal land uses are commercial, service, and recreation activities, as well, of course, as high-density residential. Maximum building height of this zoning district is thirty feet, the same as the underlying RM zoning district. At least twenty-five percent of the ground floor area of the structure must be occupied by non-residential uses, and dwelling units shall not be located on the ground floor. So, only way you could do residential units would be above the ground floor in this zoning district. The proposed zoning would allow potential of both commercial and multiple-family residential development on the property. By the way, it also allows commercial uses without any residential component. Now, the mixed-use general district was potentially a district where the city council had the opportunity to remove zoning, excuse me, storage units. Storage units are allowed in the mixed-use general zoning district. However, the applicant is requesting that storage units not be allowed on this particular development, on these five lots. So, in order to do that, they're asking for a planned development rezone to eliminate storage units as an allowed use, and that PD rezone is an appropriate mechanism for that request. And if approved by the council, this rezone will allow all uses in the mixed-use general except for storage units. The general plan, future land use map for the property designates it as commercial, which is appropriate for this mixed-use general category. And finally, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this item at their December first meeting by unanimous vote of seven to zero. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions? And the applicant is also in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any initial questions of members of the council for Mr. Morris or the applicant? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Parrott. I live at twenty-four ninety Lima Drive. I'm employed by Cole Banker Commercial Real Estate, and I am the applicant for this. Mr. Henry Garcia is the owner of the property, and we are seeking your approval to change the zoning from residential multi to mixed-use general. We think mixed-use general is the highest and best use of this property, and I think the following facts will support that conclusion. And first and foremost, the city's general plan calls for this property to be commercial. The, the residential multi-zoning is leftover from the McCullough days, and it transferred through the city and that, but in two thousand sixteen, the general plan said this should be commercial property. And recently, the city council, I know, has been concerned about depleting the inventory of commercial property when you've been asked to rezone commercial nodal properties to residential, and this does exactly the opposite. This adds almost three acres to the commercial inventory that we have. I think you'll agree, it's a pretty spectacular place for commercial development, and a forty percent lot coverage would result in fifty thousand square feet of commercial property. The mixed-use general, we think, is really appropriate, because there is a lot of residential- The mixed-use general, we think is really appropriate because there is a lot of residential around here. And this will allow for residential on the second floor, which is a concept that we've been trying to implement in the downtown area and throughout the community. And I think that doing that makes it a more neighbor-friendly neighborhood. A developer is not, who wants to have residential on his property is not going to bring in some type of commercial that starts banging on hammers at 4:30 in the morning and those sorts of things. Otherwise, his residential property will be vacant. So the neighbors should end up being good neighbors for the people who live in this proximity. Mr. Garcia and I don't believe that storage units are appropriate for this property and we didn't think you'd pass it anyway. So we have specified to eliminate that in this property. I will try to answer any questions, but I don't know if I have the time. But I just want to say thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parrott. Do any of the members of council have any questions for Mr. Parrott? Ma'am, this is right now for council for the applicant and we'll get to the public in just a second, okay? Yeah. Yeah, would anyone else like, do any council members have any questions for the applicant?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Mr. Parrott, I want to thank you so much for this design and this vision. It's been also mine since back of the days of McCullough and this is what we need. And as I, I believe this is what we need. And I believe you taking this property and working with an investor to present this image that is so feasible in so many other communities like ours that are building out. I appreciate this. I love this. And publicly, I wanted everybody to know, these commercial nodes have a lot of potential and they can work two facets for it, the commercial that we desperately need along with the residential. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Parrott.
Thank you.
Ma'am, would you like to address the council on this matter?
My name is Felice Folino. I just moved here, been a resident for a year, over a year. I just want to know, my understanding, Cal, is that you are a realtor. Are you going to recuse yourself from voting on this because you have a conflict of interest since you're a realtor?
Yeah, no, there's no conflict of interest here for me. There's, I have no investment in this property. I have no ownership in this property.
Not in his property, but you do have?
I do have a valid Arizona sales license, yes, as a realtor, but I'm not involved in this property.
So you buy and sell commercial property where there's money to be made?
No.
Zoning and?
No, I buy my personal home. I use it for just my personal thing. So, but yeah, there's no conflict of interest here for me.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your question. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter?
Hello, my name is David Diaz and I'm on the planning and zoning commission. We had this item come in front of us and after some robust conversation. I've seen these types of developments in other cities that I've lived in and they are killing two birds with one stone. It's a great idea. They're very popular because you have commercial on the bottom, residential on top, and we're just killing two birds with one stone. So that's why we voted seven to zero to approve it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional questions, comments or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lynn? Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number 22-1277, approving a planned development rezone for 401, 411, 421, 431, and 441, Lake Havasu Avenue North, tract 2305, block two, lots 10 through 14, from multiple family to mixed-use general plan development district prohibiting the allowable land use of self-storage, mini-storage, storage units.
Second?
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lynn and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.3 is approve the cooperative purchase of 17 complete sets of structural personal protection equipment from Matlick Enterprises, DBA United Fire Company, Chief Palapas.
Thanks, Luke.
Happy New Year, Mayor and Councilmembers. Before you is a cooperative agreement to purchase 17 sets of personal protective equipment for firefighting. I do have an example for you. This is just solely the coat and pants and suspenders. It's not the additional equipment, helmet, boots. This is strictly just the turnout gear. We have a replacement program within the fire department that we replace the gear on every 10-year rotation. This is due to the lifespan of the gear. And our goal, since I've been here with the department, is to provide two sets of gear. This is in case if we have a fire, they're able to clean the gear, put on a new set of gear to reduce the carcinogens that are taken off from fires and to keep our firefighters safe. So this is an important program. I just have to note that this has already been budgeted and approved in the fiscal year. I just hit the threshold for procurement to come from front of the board to ask for your permission to proceed with this purchase. It's a great program. It will continue this program for the firefighter safety. And I'm asking for your approval for $54,763.46 through the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality Cooperative Agreement. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions of the chief? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, please, yeah, just make your way to the podium, state your name.
Good evening, my name is Tim Murray. I live in Churchill Drive. If you all think back about what took place over this weekend, the tragedy that took place in New York City and children and adults that were killed in a high-rise fire. And two weeks before that, one in Philadelphia where a young child had a Christmas tree on fire with a lighter. The protective clothing that firefighters wear is there to be able to get into that building and get the people out. It doesn't take that long a period of time for that fire to go from what's called incipient stage to full burn. And the replacement of protective clothing and having a spare set with everything that's out there today, the carcinogens and everything that's non-combustible that ends up hanging around in a fire, if you want to call it that, is important that they wear their protective clothing, that they have a way of cleaning it. The sad part about it is a long, long time ago. Some of us will remember washing that gear in the same washing machines as our bed linens were. So probably not a good situation, but it's the right thing to do. It protects our firefighters, but it also protects the members of this community by enabling them to get into a building and do what they do so well, not only here in the city of Lake Havasu City, but across North America. And if you looked at that fire the other day, the sad part is watching a guy come walking out with a child that is completely limp. So great job, Chief. I think it's the right thing to do for the people. We have to take care of the guys that go in and the gals and it also provides that protection to this community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, please. And just state your name for the record, please.
Danny Rikenby, I've lived here for three years now and I have one question. Why is this a question? They deserve this. They need it. It shouldn't be for anybody to approve. It should be given to them every time they need it. They protect us. They're here for us. We shouldn't have to vote on it. We shouldn't have to talk about it. It should just be a given. And that's all I had to say.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, city code requires anything over $50,000 to come before council on any item. So that's what the chief is here for today. Would anyone else like to address the city council? All right, seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion. Mayor? Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion, but I also want to reiterate something that Chief Palapas brought up. This is already in the budget. We've already approved it. We do this every year. He has a plan. Just because of city code, as the mayor said, anything over $50,000 expenditure has to come back before the council so that the public, the people have a chance to make comments on it. So, and with that, I move to approve the cooperative purchase of 17 complete sets of structural extrication personal protective equipment, PPE, from Matlick Enterprises, doing business as United Fire Equipment Company, in the amount of $54,763.46, utilizing the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality Contract, CTR 050476, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and authorize city staff to execute additional renewal options. I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lynn and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.4 is award bid for the Avalon Drain Number Two Wash Stabilization Improvements Project to Perco Rock Company. Ms. Roche?
It's coming. Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. The item before you, the item before you tonight is for award of the Avalon Drain Number Two Wash Stabilization Project. I'm sorry. Get the complete slideshow up. Okay, there we go. The project location is Avalon Avenue to Angler Drive, just south of North Palo Verde Boulevard. The next few slides will show you existing conditions of the proposed project area. While I'm showing these slides, I'll give you a brief background of how this wash was identified. In September of 2015, an analysis was completed of the washes in Lake Havasu City. Each wash was ranked according to risk of the slope failing and scouring. Avalon Drain Number Two was ranked fifth highest among the top 10 priority projects. These are some pictures of the existing conditions. This is some of the bank erosion here with the utility pole and the existing wash along with the other pictures that were just shown. The project. The intent of this project is to install a series of concrete drop structures to reduce erosion in the wash and create a systematic bed stabilization. The existing wash banks will be repaired in critical areas that have eroded or become steep over time. Therefore, the project will include the following, 16 cast-in-place concrete drop structures, channel excavation, the placement of gabion baskets, the installation of access ramps for utility maintenance. Bids were opened on December 8, 2021. Five bids were received. The apparent low bidder on the project was Perco Rock Company for a bid amount of $1,436,555. The engineer's estimate for this project was $1,475,807. The proposed schedule for the project will be starting in March of 2022 with a contract time of 150 calendar days. Construction completion is estimated for July of 2022. This project is funded with flood control funds. If you have any questions, I'm available to ask.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Roche? Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, I just wanted to make a statement that I have worked personally with these companies, all of these companies, and my husband said that the last jobs that they have done for our washes have been exceptional. So when they come in as the lowest bidder, I want to let you guys all feel confident that the quality of work, this is what they do. They do a really good job with it and we, as a community, should be very proud that they also came in at, within budget. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
I'll make a motion, but just also to explain to those people at home, these are coming from the county flood dollars, right?
Yes, yeah, so we have flood control dollars that are part of our property tax that then are distributed back through the county. And, you know, you bring up a great point, you know, if we go back even 10, 15 years from today, when it rained or we had a rain event, you just have to think your way home, like, okay, what road am I going to take and how am I going to get through? And, you know, nowadays, we're really down to just very few and it's because of these projects that have been identified in some erosion control in this particular case and then others culvert across roadways. So those dollars have been put to great use in our community.
All right, thank you. I move to award the bid for the Avalon Drain Number Two Wash Stabilization Improvements Project to Perco Rock Company in the amount of $1,436,535.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And then we have a companion item on item 8.5 is award an agreement for professional services, construction management for the Avalon Drain Number Two Wash Stabilization Improvements Project to Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Ms. Roche?
Thank you. I do not have a separate presentation for this project. This item is also related to the Avalon Drain Number Two project to award an agreement for professional services to Kim Lee Horn and Associates for the construction management and oversight of the project in the amount of $69,656. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any questions or comments to any members of the staff or any members of the council? All right, seeing now, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Since I was the slowest and eventually got there, I'll make a motion. I move toward the agreement for professional services for the Avalon Drain Number Two Wash Stabilization Improvements Project to Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $69,656.
Second?
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item nine on the agenda is current events. Are there any council committee reports? All right, item 10, our future meetings. On Tuesday, January 25th at 6:00 PM, we will have a regular meeting. And then on Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, at 8:30 AM, we'll have our planning session. And then Tuesday, February 8th, 2022, at 6:00 PM, we'll have a regular meeting. Item 11, are there any future discussion items? All right, item 12, entertain a motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here. Happy New Year, be kind and we'll see you next time.